I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to, thank you first, I'd like to appoint Annie Croft to act as Secretary Pro Tem for our meeting. Do you have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Would you call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Gephardt?
Here. What are we?
We're doing a motion, so it'd be out.
Yeah, aren't we doing the motion for?
Oh, you're doing the motion.
To decide to approve you.
For me?
Yes, for you.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
And Mr. Gephardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes, of course.
And Mrs. Carpus?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we can make that appointment, but we're doing it as a motion, so you have an opportunity to all agree to it. Then I would ask if Ms. Croft would please call the roll.
Okay, Mr. Elick?
Here.
Mr. Gephardt?
Here.
Mr. Bax?
Here.
And Mrs. Carpus?
Here.
And Mrs. Croft?
Here.
Thank you. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And I'd like to begin by introducing the board. To my far right is Greg Elick, Board Member Greg Elick. To my immediate right is Vice President Mike Gephardt. My south, Catherine. And to my left is Jim Bax, Ms. Croft, Ms. Annie Croft, and our Superintendent, Tom Jama. And Ms. Henness will probably be joining us later in the meeting, is not able to be here at this time. I would ask if there are any board recognitions this evening?
Madam President, there are no board recognitions or presentations this evening.
Thank you. Hearing none, I will move to the Item D on our agenda, which is visitors' comments. The board appreciates those that display an interest in our meetings. And normally, the board does meet twice during the month, and we make accommodations to allow for public participation. Persons wishing to address the board for up to five minutes may place their name on a sign-in sheet and indicate what their topic is as well, and they will have up to five minutes to address the board. If additional time is necessary, you are asked to make a written request to the Treasurer's Office one week in advance of our meetings, so that you may be given up to 15 minutes to speak, and you need to also address what your topic will be in that written request as well. Each meeting, when we have participation, you're asked to directly address the board with your comments, so that remarks can be heard clearly. And if there are any questions to be asked, you're also asked to give your name and address when you step to the mic. We have no one that signed up to address the board this evening. So hearing none, we will move to the next item on our agenda, which is board member discussion. At this point in our agenda, I'm going to entertain a motion. We have some items of business before us to meet with the attorneys, and I am going to entertain a motion to request an executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase of property for public purposes and for the purpose of discussing negotiations with another political subdivision, respecting a request for economic development assistance, and for finding that the executive session is necessary to protect the interests of the applicant or the possible investment or expenditure of public funds to be made in connection with the economic development project, with possible action to follow, as authorized under Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Mr. Elick?
Moved by Mr. Elick, second?
No, that was moved by Mr. Gephardt.
I'm sorry, that's what I thought. Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bax. Any discussion? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gephardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Croft?
Aye.
And Mrs. Carpus?
Aye.
Motion carries. We will adjourn for an executive session with possible action to follow, and we would ask the legal counsel to please join us in executive session. We are back into regular session at 5:58. We're using the same clock. You'll please note that. The next item on our agenda is board member discussion items, and at this time, I will entertain a motion regarding some of the issues that we will be forced in executive session.
Yes, I'd like to ask for the adoption of a resolution, be it resolved that having been notified by the City of Illyria of an application for tax abatement filed by the Midview Crossing 2012 LLC seeking 75 percent abatement on the now completed construction and renovation at 1864 Middle Avenue, and being given the opportunity to approve and disapprove the abatement. The Illyria School District Board of Education disapproves the agreement, noting that the agreement calls for the abatement amount in excess of 50 percent and was submitted after the commencement of construction.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Elick and seconded by Mr. Gephardt. Are there any questions or any discussion? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gephardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Carpus?
Aye.
Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Board members, I also have for you this evening, you should have been receiving information regarding the OSBA, Ohio School Board Association Capital Conference. Oh, I am sorry.
Thank you. You should have been receiving emails and information regarding the OSBA Capital Conference, November 8th, 9th, 10th, and 11th in Columbus. This is the Ohio School Board Association Conference, where you have an opportunity for workshops and to gather information and for new board member training as well. I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at those dates, but we need to get those reservations in. Some of these sessions, particularly the conference luncheons, and they do have speakers and information given during the luncheons. Some of those are very limited, they're ticketed items only, and we need to get this to Dr. Jama's Executive Assistant, Mary Wright. I'm going to give you a copy, and I would ask if you could please mark, there's a place to the right for what you plan on attending. There is an Early Bird Workshop that is generally around 4:00 on Sunday. If you look at that information about attendance on the Early Bird Workshop, some do not come down on Sunday, the 8th, some of you may not come down until Monday morning. But if you would look at that, as well, there's the OSBA Black Caucus Dinner that also occurs on Sunday evening. And then the other two items are conference luncheon for Monday and Tuesday. And if you would please, you'll have an information packet that'll give you the learning sessions, so if you want to look and see, also as well, check your schedules. And if you would please get that information back to Executive Assistant Mary Wright, so that she can make sure that you do get those sessions and the information that you need. Are there any other items under board member discussion at this time? Hearing none, we'll move to Item 2, under House Bill 70 discussion. We had a presentation by a social studies teacher from the high school, by Matthew Jablonsky, regarding House Bill 70. And we had, as well as a recommendation by our superintendent, that we look at taking and action a resolution in opposition to House Bill 70. We discussed that at our last meeting, and at this time, I would ask if there is a motion, if someone would like to move the adoption of a resolution.
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay, you'd like to move the adoption of the resolution, would you please read the resolution that you are proposing?
All seven pages?
Yes, please.
Okay. Whereas public schools have been the hallmark of the American education system and the foundation of the nation's democracy, and whereas Ohio's schools have traditionally been governed by an election Board of Education, the members of which have been chosen by their fellow community members to make sound decisions concerning the education of the community's children, and to determine the most effective use of local tax dollars in pursuit of that goal, and, whereas the 2010 appointment of an academic distress commission in the Youngstown City Schools and the recently restructuring of that commission to function under a CEO appointed by the individuals who may reside outside the Youngstown community, as opposed to being named by those who best know that community, has set aside the ability of the elected Board of Education to exercise its governing authority. And whereas those restructuring changes were contained in a last-minute amendment to House Bill 70, which the Ohio General Assembly passed without any serious input from the Youngstown City Board of Education or the Youngstown community. And whereas the adoption of this amendment was completed by Columbus-based legislators with little or no connection to the Youngstown community and without any genuine effect to engage those most affected by the action. And whereas this legislation, legislation-wise lays the groundwork for the same restructuring changes to take place in other districts across the state. Therefore, be it resolved that we, the Board of Trustees of the Ohio School Boards Association, representing boards of education across Ohio, and the children, they sort of do object and protest the manner in which these draconian legislation was passed, and question how the district reforms improvements can be achieved without involving and engaging the elected Board of Education and the Youngstown community. And be it further resolved that we are the state superintendent, that we ask the state superintendent a public instruction as the manager of the Academic Distress Commission process to take appropriate steps to engage the elected Board of Education and community in this school improvement process prior to appointment of the new CEO. And be it further resolved that we implore members of the Ohio General Assembly, the State Board of Education, and Governor John Kasich to seek amendments to House Bill 70 and the Academic Distress Commission procedures that will preserve and enhance democracy and local control. And be it further resolved that such amendment should embrace the original intent of House Bill 70, fostering community engagement and collaboration to create community learning centers that will better serve Youngstown's children and facilities. And be it further resolved that all Ohio Board of Education adopt this resolution and forwards said resolution to the governor, the members of the Ohio General Assembly, the State Board of Education, and the state superintendent of public instruction.
I have a motion for the adoption of the resolution in opposition to House Bill 70. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Gephardt and a second by Mr. Elick. Do I have any comments or questions? I would ask Dr. Jama, if you would please make a comment.
Thank you, Michael, for reading that, and I do want to thank Matthew for his wonderful explanation last week of several of the things taking place throughout the state of Ohio. This was addressed yesterday, as well as our opening forum as a district. And we, you as board members, were elected by the community of Illyria to do what's best for the kids of Illyria. And by taking action on this tonight, you're stating that the parents, the teachers, and the community know what's best for kids, not outside individuals coming in to do things to districts that the community doesn't outline.
Absolutely. Absolutely. The local control is very important. There are expenditures to be made, financial decisions to be made, and as you, again, in your opening yesterday, your speech talked about hiring and who's in the positions of making the decisions for the district. And all of those are at risk with the, in House Bill 70. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gephardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus?
Aye.
And Mrs. Croft?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and thank you, Mr. Jablonsky. Thank you for bringing that to us. I will move, no further items to come before the board. I will move to the adoption of the minutes, entertain a motion to approve the Board of Education Record of Proceedings for the meeting of August 3rd and the meeting of August 5th as presented. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Bax, a second by Mr. Gephardt. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gephardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Carpus?
Aye.
And Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I would like to move to Item J, to the Superintendent Action Items, please. We will come back to the other items in the agenda, and we will do them later in the agenda, and if Ms. Henness is able to join us, she would then be available for questions. And if not, we will move to still go through the business of the treasurer. At this point, would you please, Dr. Jama, give us the Superintendent Items?
Madam President, thank you. I would like to recommend the following items for your approval under Superintendent Action Items. Item 1, approval of stipends. To approve the stipends as detailed below, at $27.64 per hour not to exceed 5 hours to the following Franklin teachers for professional development and collaboration and planning. This stipend will be supported by the Title I and Title II-A grant funds. Just to give you a little detail, and this is the way they're going to do professional development. It's going to perform professional development opportunities for teachers whereby it does not interfere with the daily classroom activities taking place. It will be on times when they're not doing actual instruction with the students to take away from classroom time.
Okay.
The next is Franklin teachers who are involved in the New Beginnings Extended Day Project, 45 minutes per day at the tutor rate. This stipend will be supported by the Stocker New Beginnings Grant, Title I Grant, and the General Fund. Again, it's to provide extended day at Franklin, where they will perform duties beyond the normal school day for 45 minutes. Next, we have a $27.64 per hour not to exceed 100 hours to the following staff members, providing professional development training beyond the school day. This stipend will be supported by Title I and Title II-A grant funds. And this is something that we're very proud of in Illyria, and Academic Services has done a beautiful job with this, providing training and professional development for staff members throughout the district whereby these two individuals perform night classes as part of the Illyria University, Illyria Schools University, and provide professional development for staff members, again, after hours. Next, we have a $150 stipend to the following staff members for training in the three-day web program for the middle school sixth grade orientation. This stipend will be supported by Title II-A grant funds, and that's for the two teachers listed below. And previously, this was brought to you with two additional names, but those two teachers weren't able to participate in the activity due to being involved in additional professional development that Academic Services and Pupil Services were providing these two staff members. So these two people stepped up and came out to help with that web training. And I'm proud to tell you, as I visited the three middle schools today, it was special to walk into each of the buildings and watch the students in their web shirts helping the sixth graders and the seventh graders get acclimated to the building. So it's a positive program that's absolutely working within our middle schools and in the Link program as well at the high school. Number 2, amendment to senior fees, to approve the amendment of senior fees from $30 to $35 for the 15-16 school year. And this $5 increase is due to the senior brunch fee increase at the Lucas Place in the Park whereby we host our senior brunch each year, which I know you've been there, and it's a wonderful occasion. Item 3, purchase order for IT, to approve the purchase of Microsoft EES agreement from CDWG at a cost not to exceed the $53,000 mark. Again, this is our district contract to have Microsoft on our computers throughout the district, and this cost is negotiated by the state, actually whereby it's in a group purchase. 4, educational alternatives, 2015-16 transportation contract, to authorize the renewal of the student transportation contract between the Illyria City School District Board of Education and Educational Alternatives, to provide daily door-to-door special education transportation from the student's home to EA treatment program throughout the 15-16 school years detailed in enclosure J4. And again, these are students who have disabilities and special needs that go above and beyond and have specifically trained individuals to transport them. Item 5, approval of open door secretary, to authorize the limited service contract for open door secretary for the 15-16 school year as presented. This is for the auxiliary clerk, and this comes from the auxiliary funds given to the district.
I have a question. Do we pay for that?
It comes out of the auxiliary funds.
But I just, I didn't understand it. We're paying our secretary to be at open door?
Through the auxiliary, we also do it for the other private schools in Illyria through the auxiliary fund services. Anna, might I correct? In Dawn?
Yeah. It's actually money that's generated from students that are attending a non-public school. So the state has that money flow through, we used to term before, and it's called auxiliary funds for their students that are not disabled, but general ed students. And then we use those funds for whatever they decide, actually for auxiliaries, whatever the non-public school decides they're going to use it for.
Okay.
So actually, the secretary's work is minimal, and it is done here by someone in this building.
That's for hours.
Yeah.
Thank you, Donna Creedian, Ann Schloss. The camera's not going over there, so we want the people to, whoops, to know who they're hearing, talking. Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions on that? Okay, please.
And then we have Item 6, excess cost contracts for non-resident child with disabilities, to authorize the contract for the 14-15 school year for the Illyria Schools to provide special education services for non-resident students. These services are contracted due to open enrollment court placement or parental institution placement. The school district is Maslin City Schools. And with that, Madam President, that concludes my recommendations for your approval.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the items 1 through 6 as presented by the superintendent?
So moved.
I'm sorry?
Oh, yes. 15, 16.
Sorry, I was busy throwing pens over here. Can we get a, get a motion?
I made the motion.
You may have a motion and a second, and then we'll correct it. You have a motion, a second?
Second.
And a second. And it's been brought to our attention that Item 6 should be corrected to read, to authorize the contract for the 2015-2016 school year. So would you amend your motion to approve the item as amended?
I'll amend my motion.
To reflect the correction?
And I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion to amend it, to approve as corrected to read 2015-2016 in Item 6, right?
Yes.
Thank you, to our attorney and to Jim, thank you. Would you, no further discussion or question, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gephardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Carpus?
Aye.
And Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Motion carries. Superintendent Other?
Madam President, there are no items under Superintendent Other.
Thank you. Personnel items recommended by the superintendent.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to recommend the following items for your approval under personnel action under the superintendent. Item 1, resignation of certified staff, to approve the resignation of the following certified staff member as detailed below. Darlene Line as a part-time German teacher at Illyria High School. And just to let you know, Darlene has, she was brought on two years ago to help us out with the German program as we phased it out when we had the budget cuts. Darlene had the opportunity to get employment in another district, and she was going to provide services at Illyria High School this year for one to two periods a day. What we're going to do, just so you are aware, we are going to fill the needs of those students, and we're going to continue to provide what those students need. And we're going above and beyond even what we said a year ago whereby that was going to be phased out. We're going to do it through computer classes online. So actually, it's going to be better fit for the students at the high school, where they'll be able to take the course that they need in German, whether it's before school, during school, or after school, they'll be able to fit this into their schedule and still get that credit that they need with the staff at Illyria High School helping out. So no student's going to be hurt by losing this position. In fact, students are going to be helped because they're going to have the opportunity to take it when they can do it, rather than when she was going to teach the course.
Which allows them more flexibility in their schedule.
Absolutely, it's all about flexibility. Item 2, appointment of certified staff, to approve the appointment of certified staff as detailed below. James Black, a long-term social studies teacher at Northwood. And I had the opportunity to work with a couple of these people when they were doing their student teaching at Illyria High School, and we got some top-notch candidates again to fill some of these positions, so I'm excited about that. Patricia Budd, long-term substitute language arts at Illyria High School. Nicholas Coleman, social studies teacher at Eastern Heights. Paige Poleski, grade 1 teacher at Franklin, Illyria High School grad, I want to add. And Nicole, I know I'm going to mess this up.
Vonche.
Vonche. Vonche. And she will be a long-term sub-art teacher at Crestwood, the Early Childhood Center, Ely Anne McKinley. Also below are several Title I tutors, ELL tutors, substitute teachers, and supplemental contract. And you'll notice there's one staff member whereby it says substitute teacher for $254 a day. And what that is, it's actually a teacher on staff, we're waiting for their licensure to come in, and they will be brought to you to fill that position at Illyria High School. So we are paying them at their daily rate as we brought them back for a position that they will be actually teaching. The OD has not released their license yet. Under Item 3, approve the unpaid medical family leave of the certified staff, to approve the unpaid medical family leave of the following certified staff as detailed below. Jamie Chanko, grade 4 at Crestwood, will be on maternity leave. Item 4, retirement of classified staff, to approve the retirement of the following classified staff member as detailed below. Item 5, resignation of classified staff, to approve the resignation of the following two staff members as detailed below. Amy Marchinick at Illyria High School and Amy Patton, educational transition professional at Prospect. And I am aware that, was brought aware today that she did receive a teaching position, corrects?
That's right.
Excellent. Item 6, termination of a classified staff member, to approve the termination of the following classified staff member as detailed below. Item 7, appointment of a classified staff member, to approve the appointment of the following classified staff member as detailed below. And we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 of them. Item 8, classified staff stipend, to approve the stipend of $1,000, providing support resources and serving as a mentor trainer for the new building secretary at Crestwood. And that's for Missy Cochran. Missy is currently the secretary at McKinley, who's a phenomenal employee, a phenomenal secretary, and she has offered her expertise to help the new secretary at Crestwood. And I had an opportunity to meet the new secretary twice now, and she's absolutely fantastic. She's going to catch on very quickly, and I know her and Steve, the new principal at Crestwood, are going to be a fantastic team. Item 9, athletic supplementals of non-employees, to approve the athletic supplementals of the following non-employees as detailed below. And you'll see there are four individuals there. Cameron Charlie on Protestant is an Illyria High School graduate, and he will be helping out with the volleyball program, again, at Illyria High School. And I know this young man is very excited about that as well. Item 10, to approve the appointment of the SROs, to approve the appointment of the following security resource officers for Illyria High School at $40 an hour and $35 an hour to perform security detail or other as indicated below. And you'll see what we did was, we presented the entire police department, police force for your approval, and what this will do, this will eliminate the need down the road. for your approval and what this will do, this will eliminate the need down the road. Just to bring individual police officers to the board as we hire them. Officer Lesh, who was our SRO last year. And the problem is the Alaria Police Department right now, due to staffing numbers, are having difficult times because they're sold low in manpower. So what this is going to do is allow officers be assigned to Alaria High School on their day off. But again, it's going to give us the flexibility to work with the police department on having officers who are, who know the high school. Most of them, if not all of them, are going to be graduates from Alaria High School who will be performing these duties. And what this will do as well as help us out with when we have an individual covering a football game, basketball game down the road, they won't have to continuously be brought to the board for your approval for hiring. So if we hire the whole, the whole department and when we need them, they're already board approved.
And?
So you're asking probably why is Chief Whitley on there? That's, we just did the whole.
There's a Jama guy on here too. Worried about him.
I don't blame you.
May I have a motion to approve?
I'm sorry. I was just saying, Madam President, that concludes my recommendations under personnel matters.
I have a motion to approve the personnel items recommended by the superintendent?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Gebhardt, seconded by Mr. Elick. I just have a question, actually, to, I just, a question about ELL tutors. Do we have English language learners or English second language?
That's English language learner.
Okay.
The ESL and ELL are used interchangeably even by the State Department.
Thank you. I thought at one time we were told to move forward with English second language and not to use ELL, but they use it interchangeably. Thank you.
They do, they do.
Okay.
And we've always just had to start with the ELL.
Okay. Thank you. At one time, we were just told to move toward English second language. So, okay, thank you. And then I just have a question, Dr. Jama. On your item ten, there's no name but a date on it. Is there anyone that was left off or is that just inadvertent? On the last line on item ten, there's no name but there's a date in it.
There should be no name.
No name there?
The date and the hour was put on there mistakenly.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we weren't leaving one off that should have been put on there. Thank you very much. Are there any further questions or comments? Hearing none, would you please call the roll?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear who made the motion.
We're going to, excuse me, we're going to have Ms. Croft finish this and then we'll go to you, okay? Well, then we'll move to you. Thank you. Would you please call the roll, Ms. Croft?
Oh, okay. Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Ms. Carpus?
Yes.
And Ms. Croft?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. And thank you, Ms. Hennes, so you're, we will go back at this point in the agenda, well, let's see, I'm sorry, do we, we do, we'll finish, I'm sorry, we do have other personnel items.
Let's talk about that. Let's talk about that.
I am sorry, yes, we do. I see we have.
Madam President, I do have one item under other personnel action for your consideration this evening. To approve the appointment of the certified staff member as detailed below. Nancy Gebhardt to be an ELL tutor for the Alaria City School District at the hourly rate of 27.64.
Mine says sixty. Sixty dollars.
Would you please, or I'm sorry, do I have a motion? I have a recommendation from the superintendent. Do I have a motion to approve?
That's all move.
Moved by Mr. Elick. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bax. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Ms. Hennes, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Substained.
Mrs. Carpus?
Abstained. And I'm sorry, I think, did you hear you call my name?
Did you get that for the record?
Aye. Aye.
That he sustained?
Abstaining, abstaining.
Oh, my.
Thank you. Motion carries with four ayes and one abstention by Mr. Gebhardt. Thank you.
Substained.
Do the super, do you have any items in the superintendent report?
Absolutely. Do you want to go to that right now, Madam President?
Yes, I would. And then, I'm sorry, we'll come back to the subject.
Absolutely. I got several items under superintendent's report. First and foremost, I want to thank you for being there yesterday to support opening day. And I can say that I believe it was a successful day with our cheerleaders and introducing the many, many new staff members that have joined the Alaria City School family. And, you know, it's so exciting to see when I asked them to raise their hands if they were Alaria High graduates or had something to do with the Alaria City Schools. And you see so many hands raised in the audience and the pride and the twinkle in their eyes was just, were just absolutely incredible. So it was, it was a very, very positive opening day and I didn't expect to talk that long, to be honest with you. I, I had so much time set aside and next thing I know, when I get the microphone and like I am tonight, when I get the microphone and I have an opportunity to talk, I do so, especially when I have an opportunity to talk about the Alaria City Schools and the great things that we're doing because we are doing so many great things and our staff is just, just incredible. And I had that pleasure of interacting with them yesterday. I can tell you, today was the first day with students and absolutely went off without any major hitches. We always have those little hitches of a bus arriving late or a, something taking place with kids, not sure which building to be at. But overall, it was an absolute successful day. I went to four, five buildings today. The middle schools, the EECB, as well as Windsor. And as I walked into the classrooms, I saw so many positive things taking place with the teachers and, and ice breaking, icebreaker activities and talking about relationships and talking about pioneer pride and pioneer spirit. And when I spoke to each class and I tried to hit every classroom in each building, I would ask the students, I said, do we have pioneer spirit going on in this building? And every student would have a thumbs up and it was cute as I was walking through here, we had the little ones getting tested today. And then I went into the room around the corner and they were eating. And I don't know who this little guy was, but he kept saying, Jama's here, Jama's here. So as I said yesterday, I go by Jama and that little guy must have heard me down the road someplace, so. But it was, it was just an awesome, awesome first day with kids as well. Something else I'm happy to report and proud to report to the community and it's out there already, starting in September, we will have one board meeting a month to go out into the community and visit buildings. And our first meeting will take place at Ely Elementary School. Jack Devey has so graciously stepped up and offered his building and they're going to do a little presentation with you that night, five or seven-minute presentation. But I think it's going to get the public an opportunity to come into our buildings and see the many, many great things taking place in our schools. And if we have a need, we can do a mini tour on that night as well. And I gave the schedule out, I presented it to you, I believe, the second meeting is, I don't want to get this wrong, I better not say it. But I know the first meeting's at Ely at 5:30 and it'll take place in the gymnasium and we'll get the schedule out to the community as we move forward. But I thought it was a great idea to get the public into the schools and interacting with their students. And then finally, based on last week's or last meeting's presentation by Mr. Jablonsky, I just want to state a couple of things. First of all, thank you again, Matt, and you're a very respected rock star teacher in this district and we thank you for everything that you do. But with some positive news, I'm proud to say that the state is listening. The state is listening. They've asked for input and now teachers are helping write the new assessments that are being used throughout the state of Ohio. We'll be using the American Institute Researcher, the AIR test, which is reportedly, and we're hearing this from staff members, not saying it's that perfect, perfect test or perfect evaluation tool, but we're getting more positive feedback than we did with the PARP assessments. It's more user-friendly and it's more student-friendly. And then there, no more double windows. All testing will take place in April and May. So we're not going to have that large stretch of, of testing. But accountability to us, and I think we know this and people will say, well, aren't you for testing? I'm absolutely for testing and I'm for formative and substantive assessments and we are as a district and we want to know how our students are doing, but we want to make sure it's done right. And again, I just want to thank you for that feedback last week and the resolution today. We're, we're not, the problem is we want to get the results back quicker and we want to get the information back quicker so we can use it in our daily instruction and what we do to thrive instruction. So I'm proud to report that tonight and it's positive and we'll continue to work as a team within this district to do right by our kids and to make sure that they're prepared. And by working together as a team, this, this will take place. So just wanted to present that tonight.
Thank you. Part of it, you kind of got really comfortable yesterday when you said, I think you got kind of comfortable, settled in there, talking on the stage and kind of got comfortable in there. And that's great news to hear because again, I think sometimes there is a little bit of misunderstanding about the fact that there is no objection to testing and to the tools that it provides as an, it's just about the instrument used and the timing and if they have the correct input into forming that and into making those decisions on what they're going to use.
One good thing too is our academic services department and Anne and her colleagues work very closely with this and they constantly are getting feedback and they're able to give feedback when feedback is needed from our staff. So Alaria is at the forefront of what's taking place throughout the state.
Great, as it should be. Great, thank you. Are there any other comments or questions to the report? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would ask Ms. Hennes if we did items through F and beginning at item G for the treasure action items? Thank you for joining us.
The first item that I have this evening is to accept the financial report for the month of July, which includes all the bank reconciliations, investment report, cash balance report, and appropriation expense reports as detailed in enclosure G1. The second item this evening is to express, to acknowledge, express appreciation and accept the following gifts and donations. First Congregational United Church of Christ presented a donation of six student backpacks and supplies, and school supplies valued at $300 to students at McKinley Elementary. Purchase orders, to approve the attached list of purchase orders in order to comply with the district's purchasing procedures as detailed in enclosure G3. Number four is to authorize the treasurer to transfer the following funds and it's to transfer $532,550.21 from the general fund to Fund 004, which is the LFI fund, and to transfer $224,662.24 from the permanent improvement fund to Fund 004, which is the LFI fund. I'm sorry, Mr. Elick, that I didn't include what Fund 004 was. You've asked me to do that before.
Katie, is your microphone on?
I don't know. Yeah.
Okay.
And the last item is to approve the renewal of the contract for Ray and Associates to prepare the comprehensive annual financial report, also known as the CAFR, for the Alaria City School District for the years ending June 30th, 2016, 2017, and 2018 as presented. And that's all I have for this evening.
Do I have a motion to approve the items recommended by the treasurer as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Gebhardt, a second by Ms. Croft. Are there any questions or comments? And I think, Ms. Hennes?
Katie, I got one question on the Ray and Associates contract. Is, just want to understand that they, what do they do? Is this more of a summary? Is this, is it a compilation of a summary of all of the financials of the district?
Yes, it's a compli, yes. To put it in easy, easy terms, yes. And it's a requirement, especially if we're going to go out to bid for, or to get it, go for bonds. We're going to have to have, it's a requirement to have a, a bond rating, excuse me. We'll have to have a CAFR prepared and it's a comprehensive financial report. And we've worked with Ray and Associates for a number of years. They were actually our auditors for our financial statements, for just our general financial statements. Since, I think they came the year after I started working here, so they've been here for over 10 years. So they've been our, they've prepared our CAFR for, I want to say maybe six years now, I would have to look. So I'm recommending that their contract be approved even though I'm leaving because my team is so accustomed to their needs and the auditors who are currently here are accustomed to, they have a good relationship. So I just think that a new person coming in to take all that on, it would be a challenge for them. Their fee only increases 2% each year, so I, they answer questions outside of just the CAFR for us, so that's my recommendation.
Thank you. A question on that. A compiled CAFR is a CAFR that we give them the information and they put it together. There's no assurance involved with it. Are we able to do a compiled CAFR? And why wouldn't we have an audited or reviewed CAFR where there's actually assurance provided on the CAFR?
I couldn't answer. We've always done it this way, I guess.
And isn't, with our bonding, aren't we required to have some sort of level of insurance on our CAFR?
No, we've always had this level of the CAFR done and the PAT, I mean, for both levels. We just had a, a bond rating done because of the refinancing. And then when we did our initial bonds, we had the same bond, I mean, the same level of CAFR done. They did, they prepared that one at the same time, so.
And do most school districts get compiled CAFRs or do they get them audited and reviewed?
I would imagine that they do this one because we have an annual audit that we're required to get. So, I mean, some districts don't have a CAFR prepared, they take the fine and not have a CAFR prepared.
So what that says is all our information in our CAFR, there's no assurance, so it's not being audited like the audited financial statements, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But they take the CAFR and usually use some of that information to prepare our financial statements. So I mean, yes and, yes and no. If that's a, I mean, I don't, I don't like giving you that answer, but yes and no, I guess is my best answer for, for you, if that.
Yeah, I think I misread because I was under the impression that, in reading this, that the, that they were going to prepare this as, maybe they were preparing this for us for the first, for the next three years. But in addition, once they prepared this, it was going to then be presented for us and it was going to be submitted for our actual CAFR. I thought maybe we did a PATR first, so that's not the procedure. I thought maybe it was the same as with what we do in, in the governmental industry. So it's totally different.
No, it's different. So we do the CAFR, it has to be completed by, I think, the end of November so that it can be included in our annual audit, which has to be done by December 31st.
And at no time in school districts, and I'm just asking this for me, so at no time in school districts, the treasurer's office would not prepare their own CAFR?
Some, some.
PATR first and then CAFR next, or no?
Some treasurers do prepare their own CAFR. Some, some treasurers do. I've never done that or worked for, well, I can't say I've not worked for someone who has. Kent Zeeman, who's a CPA, he does, has prepared his own CAFR, but I didn't work for him when he did that. I mean, so I've not been involved in that and actually probably wanted, to be on, I mean.
Well, my thought on this is since we're going to hire an outside CPA firm and you're leaving, does it make sense to have three years of compiled CAFRs with no assurance level since we're switching treasurers?
You've not had them, I mean, if you would like them to be assured, since you're going to have a different treasurer, but, I mean, you've not had them assured in the past.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying with hiring a new treasurer and switching, I'm not so sure if there's a big comfort level there that we should continue just to have them compiled with the same. Kind of, my thinking is to have a new, when the new treasurer comes in, also have some assurance done on the CAFR and the audit so we have a comfort level there.
Well, the audit, you're not going to get to choose who you.
Right, but it's still, it's still an audit though.
Right.
So. So, I mean, I'm not sure how the board feels about having a three-year contract to have compiled CAFRs going forward, when we're going to be switching over to a new treasurer.
I mean, you can change the term on it if you'd like.
Could we just go one year on the compilation of the CAFR?
Absolutely.
And go from there?
I would ask that we call the vote on this, and if the vote does not carry, then if you wish to make a new motion, as a cleaner way to do it, please correct with attorney? Thank you. That, then if there's no further discussion, then you call the vote, and then if this does not carry, then I would entertain another motion. And if you want to change the term in that, you can do so. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bax?
No.
Mrs. Croft?
No.
Mr. Elick?
No.
Mr. Gebhardt?
No.
Mrs. Carpus?
No. The motion is defeated by a vote of five and O. I would entertain if there's a motion from, anyone from the board?
Yeah, I mean, I'll make the motion if we can just change it to.
Do you want to read it then, to, for the year ending June 30, 2016?
Correct.
Get the motion, please. So would you please move the approval of, please?
I'm sorry.
If you would read the motion, are you, to move the approval of?
Yeah, make the motion that we approve it, everything else as is, and change the compilation of the CAFR for the three years to the year ending June 30, 2016 only.
Okay, so, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, I have, and a second, to approve the renewal of the contract for RE and Associates to prepare the comprehensive annual financial report for the Alaria City School District for the year ending June 30, 2016. Is there any further discussion or question? I'm sorry.
This day is.
Yes, yes. Okay, so we have amended that, and then we have, we voted no on item five only. And now if we would vote for items, make the motion for items one through four.
We've got a motion and a second.
Yes, we have a, okay. I thought we called, we have a call. Okay, I'm sorry. Would you call the roll?
So let me make sure I understand this. The motion in the second is to approve the item, approve items one through five, one through four as presented, and approve item five.
As amended.
As amended, to reflect only one year, ending June 30, 2016, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Bax?
Yes.
Mrs. Croft?
Aye.
Mr. Elick?
Aye.
Mr. Gebhardt?
Aye.
Mrs. Carpus?
Aye. Motion carries to approve items one through five, with item five amended. Did you have any other items this evening? Do you have any report for us this evening?
No, I do not.
Have no other items and no other report. I would then ask that we go to where we were on the agenda, back to, we were at item O on the agenda, which is the Board of Education reports. Are there any reports from the board members this evening?
Just that, it was a great job being at the kickoff with Jama. He did a great job. It was a lot of fun to be there.
Thank you. It was fun. Agreed.
Fun, and a lot of energy, but really, a lot of energy, lot of positive in the room. And I'm so glad that a link was sent for the video that was presented by the students.
That was hilarious.
That, it was fun, and I.
You know, you can't imagine sitting there and listening to them, just how good it makes you feel. It's something special.
Yeah, for recognition purposes, who did that video? That was outstanding.
I was just going to say that Amy and her team with Marty did a phenomenal job, and I know Amy called the one day, and she goes, Jama, now I know why you love this high school so much and these kids, because I just want to go back and work with them again tomorrow, and then the next day. And what did you even say, Amy, the one day you walked in, they say, hey, Ms., what were they saying to you?
Hi, Ms. Higgins.
Yeah. I didn't want them, though, to break the secret that I'm not really good at technology, and I kept telling the kids, you know, I Twittered everything instead of tweeted, and they get the biggest kick out of that. And I told Ms. Croft, they said, when you had a building of 2,000, when you weren't trying to do something, you would just grab a kid in the hall and say, come here, make me look good with this, because I'm not sure what to do, so it works out well.
Great, thank you to Amy Higgins and to Marty Yaden and on the staff and everyone that were a part, that had a part in that. That was a great video. We did learn a few other things as well, and I believe that you have instilled in us an expectation of birthday?
Birthday, birthday, birthday!
Yes.
That's all I heard today, is how, when am I going to get my pencil? So we're working on that as a district option right now.
Are you giving any?
I think, I think that's the expectation.
I can't, I can't blow the secret yet, what's going to be happening.
Are you giving any thought to sharpening that pencil, like the one lady said, one gal said?
She did make note it wasn't really useful, because it wasn't sharpened on that.
That was funny.
And the, and the other thing, there was some speculation on what a Jama dance would look like. Then we had a little preview at the end of what the Jama dance currently looks like. And I would hope that as we have things to celebrate, that we might get a little Jama celebratory dance in our future at some time.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay.
You'll see me dancing on this table a year from now when we have new schools coming.
All right.
Great, great. That's our celebratory dance we're looking for.
That's a promise.
That's a promise. Thank you. Anything further, board? I would just remind you on your OSBA to be sure and get that filled out, so that you have the accommodations that you need. I'm not sure that you kind of understand how that goes, but we actually, in the past, and Katie can speak to this, we're kind of sitting there waiting for when it opens and when we have a chance to make our reservations and hop in there, so it's something we want to make sure we have completed. Are there any other items to come before the board this evening? Dr. Jama?